I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't ask to remind everyone that this is speaking tonight that they would sure remember to the button up, means it's on, the button down.
I'd like to have it up when you're talking. Okay. So Superintendent's report is our next agenda item, Knights of Columbus gift.
Mr. President and Board members, and I have the button on my microphone up as instructed, so thank you. We are very pleased once again to accept an annual gift from the Knights of Columbus, $1,081.78 that will be used to support our students with cognitive disabilities for needs that our district funds, additional things beyond what our school funds support. So it's certainly we appreciate, deeply appreciate, the Knights of Columbus continuing to recognize our students with disabilities and to support their learning in this effort.
Thank you. Thanks to the Knights of Columbus for their support. We're going to move now to the topics for action. We've got, our first item is 2013-14 district goals. I'm going to make some comments about this and then before we vote on them, and Mary would like to say a few things too as well. I think the important thing to note about our goals for the upcoming year is that we have spent, as a board, a significant amount of time in work session, working on these goals, and some of these goals are carryovers from past years, of course, as well. We, of course, have targeted these goals based on our HSD 2025 strategic plan, and each goal is assigned to a working committee of the board, and so each committee has a specific assignment for these specific goals. The first goal that were, the first two goals under High School Learning for the Future and Six to Twelve Space for Learning are obvious goals. The High School for Learning has been an initiative that's been underway for a number of months and years now. We're excited about that's potential, and we certainly want to have that continue, continue to make progress towards that plan and that schedule. The obvious one that is on a lot of people's minds is, of course, the space needs that we've got for our sixth through 12th grade. I hope to obviously make progress with that as well, and we're narrowing down options and looking at possibilities, and so we're moving closer to that. I should note that the High School Learning for the Future goal has been primarily assigned to the Learning and Program Development Committee, so they'll be working with administration on that goal. The Space for Learning goal will have its primary home in the Facilities and Grounds Committee, and a secondary committee will be involved as well, and that would be the Finance Committee, for obvious reasons, I believe you'd understand. Next goal is the HSD 2025 implementation, the plan to integrate to full extent possible the district's strategic vision, HSD 2025 with the implementation of multiple state-mandated program effectiveness and accountability changes. So we are continuing to move based on mandates that come from our state and from our own interests, the identification of accountabilities and effectiveness for our teachers and staff, and we are, it's kind of a moving target, but we're working towards implementing or developing a plan that'll fit our district specifically, but yet still fall within the mandates of the state. Primary committee for that will be the Learning and Program Development Committee, with the secondary committee's responsibility would be the Personnel Committee. The last two goals that we have are under high-quality staff, and the one, the first one is to support the transition of five new administrative leaders that are at school and district level. We have five new leaders, key leaders, to this district we're excited about, but it'll take some time for all of us to get into, through a learning curve, and into our, into the position so that we're finally on all cylinders together, and so we certainly understand that that's a, will take some time, and so we want to make that a goal for this year. The primary board committee responsibility for that would be the Personnel, and then the final one, to begin implementation of a multi-year strategic compensation development plan, which has not been fully developed at this point. We're working towards that end. The two committees there, the primary one will be Personnel, and the secondary one will be the Finance Committee, and I think, Mary, you'd like to say a few things about that.
So just on that last goal, the strategic compensation, this is a new area for us, and I'll talk a little bit about the work plan that the board has taken quite a bit of time to talk about in detail at the work session. And so it's, strategic compensation is really compensation that involves practices that align with the organizational goals. And so as we move forward into strategic compensation, we start with the current year, and we are currently piloting full, and preparing for full-scale implementation of a new state-mandated evaluation system for teachers and principals and associate principals. So that's important for us as we prepare this year with that full implementation coming next year, and certainly an evaluation system is part of, aligned with a compensation system. So you'll see the first two, one and two, on the work plan, and then moving on to number three, we have, the board has identified and supported retirement benefits for teachers who are eligible and to retire by 2016. And so we have benefits in place for those people, retirement benefits, but beyond that, we still have work to do to look at what benefits are being offered by other districts and what benefits that we want to consider for Hudson. So that's an area for us to get into, working towards determining that this year, and I know that's a priority and has been a priority of our teacher advisory committee, as they've identified moving into the new compensation time since Act 10 was enacted. So the next one, number four, is revisiting salary comparison groups that we've used. We used those last year as we did a major study in each of our areas for teaching staff, support staff, administrators, and educational specialists. So again, it's revisiting those comparison groups and determining if those are the groups that we want to go forward, or if we want to make revisions to that group, or the board does. Five is progressing towards improving competitiveness, and certainly the goal has been and continues to be of this board that you've articulated many times, retaining and attracting quality, high-quality staff. Six is selecting a consultant, and that would be closer to the spring of the year for work in the following year to assist with development of this new strategic salary model. And on each of the years of this multi-year plan, we have at the end revisiting the plan, where are we, what, how did we accomplish, and is there, are there other steps that we need to add or modify in the plan? So if we look to the next year, 2014-15, then we will be in that full-scale implementation of the new state-mandated evaluation process for both teachers, principals, and associate principals, and we're preparing for that, and, but that will be a major initiative in the district. We'll also be implementing then that new replacement structure for retirement benefits beyond 2016 that we'll work on this year, the board will make decisions about. Then we'll progress again towards improving competitiveness to retain and attract quality staff, talked about just briefly a few minutes ago, and we will be working with that consultant to research the development of that new strategic salary model involving staff as well in that process. And we'll be doing that for various groups, teachers, educational specialists, managers, coordinators, and administrators, and again revisiting the plan. So when we get to 2015-16, that's our full implementation year, and we would be starting the implementation finally of that new strategic compensation plan that's aligned with the goals and aligned with the new evaluation system of principals and associate principals and teachers. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those, and also as, as the board considers action on the goals, I would just recommend that you take action on the goals themselves, the work plan, if we would just use that as a work plan, because then we're able to modify that without bringing it back to the board, and just going to the committees to make any revisions in the reporting to the board.
Any questions regarding the goals or the plan?
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce?
Just a couple of questions. You know, strategically, I don't see any issues with the goals themselves. Obviously, we'll have a lot of good work sessions and discussions on them, but we can't be the only district facing this issue with compensation, so I guess, just curious to learn maybe what other work sessions or best practices are being shared amongst other districts, and how they might be addressing this problem, and is there an opportunity for us to work together with other districts to make sure that we're sharing those practices across the state?
Well, superintendents are definitely doing that. In fact, there are two board members attending a session, a full-day session tomorrow, Jamie Johnson and Lynn Robson, with a number of the administrators that spends quite a bit of time on compensation, as well as educator effectiveness and tying those two together. So that's one thing. The superintendents in CISA 11, all of the superintendents have had a number of sessions. I know Tim has, has attended those with me, as well as Nancy Sweet, who retired Nancy Sweet, and we're also part of the Large District Caucus in the state. I'm a member of that, being one of the largest 30 districts in the state of Wisconsin, and we meet four times a year, and that's always on our agenda. So we are sharing those practices. In fact, one of the things that we have shared are consultants and assessments of those consultants, so we'll continue to share that information.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions before we go to vote? Unless there's any objections, I will, we'll take this, all of these goals as one action, and so I'll entertain a motion to accept the goals as presented. So moved. Motion by Brian?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move then to the consent items as is listed, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the language specifically regarding the expenditures.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the consent items include that moving the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in an amount of $2,357,147.75.
Okay. Motion by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. I don't believe we have citizens' requests to speak. Okay. All right, then we're moving on then to the reports. Our first report tonight is regarding Common Core State Standards, and Jamie and Sandy are taking this one, so.
Yes, and at our Learning and Program Development Committee meeting, we had a presentation from Sandy that she's now going to share with the rest of the board on the Common Core State Standards. These Common Core State Standards were adopted by Wisconsin, I believe in 2010. We're one of 45 states to have adopted these Common Core standards. The standards provide consistent English Language Arts and Mathematics expectations for what students should know and be able to do in kindergarten through 12th grade, as opposed to measuring just fourth grade, eighth grade, and seniors. This is kindergarten through 12th grade. The decisions concerning curriculum and content, though, continue to be made at the local level. This is not something that's being necessarily dictated as to what exactly we teach. I think Sandy's going to get in more details on that, but this is important because these Common Core standards link, are linked to other important state initiatives regarding accountability reform, educator effectiveness and so forth, and being able to have a common measuring stick, I guess, for that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sandy.
Thank you. As Jamie mentioned, the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics, including the Literacy and History, Social Studies, Science, and Technical Subjects, were adopted by the state in June 2010. Wisconsin adopted the standards because they aligned with Wisconsin's goal of all students college and career-ready. They were higher, clearer, and more specific at each grade level than our old standards, and they do this while preserving the local control for districts, schools, and educators to determine the curriculum, resources, and approaches that are important to every Wisconsin community. A little background on history, I think I clicked too many times. Here's a little story of Wisconsin's journey to the adoption. Before Common Core State Standards, the standards Wisconsin handed plays were adopted in 1998, and I have to just show you because the pictures tell it all. So here's two examples of our 1998 standards, so a little ancient. They were written for grades four, eight, and 12. That's it. So every district in the state had to fill in the blanks with outcomes for all of the other grade levels. In 2007, Wisconsin began the process of revising standards. DPI held a summit to gather input from state business leaders. They had a task force review the standards and found them, surprisingly, outdated, and during this process, a discussion began between the National Governors Association and the Council of Chief Schools, State, no, Council of Chief State School Officers about the idea of a common set of benchmarks. The State School Officers is an organization of public officials who head Departments of Elementary and Secondary Education, which in our case is State Superintendent Tony Evers, which, whose name you might recognize. Let me do it this way. Wisconsin joined the effort in 2009 and took an active role. Lynette Russell was on the governing board. Lynette is currently the Assistant State Superintendent and used to be the Director of Wisconsin's Office of Educational Accountability. Drafts of the standards were reviewed by various teams to provide feedback, which was incorporated into subsequent drafts, and the standards were released for public feedback in March 2010, followed by adoption, as we said, in June 2010. Following adoption, DPI partnered with the CISA's to create foundational training modules, which Hudson District staff participated in at our CISA in Turtle Lake. Training was developed for English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Disciplinary Literacy. I want to stress this evening that as part of our alignment, as part of our program review process, we review and align state and national standards consistently every year as, as part of our review process. Standards have always established what students need to learn, but the district and our teachers have decided how. As each curricular area goes through review, there are many steps which ensure local decision-making in the curriculum instruction and assessment development process, and I've shared a few of those on our list. So part of our process includes looking, obviously, at performance assessment data, looking at identifying our strengths, our gaps, and making recommendations for improvement. We look at HSD 2025 and our graduate learner outcomes, again, looking for alignment. We look at national standards, state standards, and local or professional standards. We explore and evaluate literature and research, always looking for best practice, and then we can begin the process of creating our own units by establishing and during understandings and essential questions, and then identifying program, course, and grade learning targets. That unwrapping priority standards is a process of looking at the standards and then breaking that down into what would need to be into, in each unit. Then we design our assessment tasks, and then also then look for resources, which is a broad process as far as looking at not only textbooks, but online resources, supplementary materials, articles, whatever we're going to use, software in the, in the area. So I brought a few things in my pile here just to know, we look for things like for best practices and current trends. This is from the Alliance for Excellent Education, talking about adolescent literacy. This is one of the books we use throughout the district, Power Standards, again, looking at how to create priority standards. When we're looking at best practices, especially now with our focus on literacy, the last time social studies went through the review, we look for books like Reading Like a Historian, so again, just looking for how do we bring all those pieces into our process? And then this book is from the Charles Dana Center, Algebra One Assessment. So again, when we're taking math through, some examples of performance assessment, again, just constantly looking at what we're doing, what are the best in the field suggesting, looking at other states as they're implementing the Common Core, because one of the positive pieces with the Common Core is there are 45 states that have adopted the Core. So now, instead of just looking in Wisconsin, we can look throughout the nation and look for some of the best practices out there and the best curriculums in what they're doing, and kind of pick and pull from all of those pieces. Another piece that the Common Core did put out, just as a resource, but sometimes I think it gets confused with the actual standards, it's, there are some appendices, appendices. So there, this one has text exemplars and sample performance tasks. So again, we did look at this when we tried to determine, when we looked at where our, when we looked at our novels, especially in grade six through 12, we looked at the Lexile levels, where do they stand, where should they be based on the Common Core, and they provided examples of textbooks and articles that would be appropriate if we're going to say, we'll be reading at the 10th grade level, what does that mean? So again, they provided some resources and examples for us to consider, but the final decision was always ours. Now, examples of how the standards have changed, so on the left side, you'll see an example from grade eight from the English Language Arts, and on the right side, an example of a Common Core standard. And for the most part, if you just look at the verbs, if you look at identify and explain in the first one, in, in education, we consider those pretty low-level thinking verbs. And if you look at the right then, cite the evidence that supports analysis of what this text says explicitly, as well as inferences drawn from the text. A much higher order activity would be required in the Common Core standard. Another example in grade eight, you can see on the left side, compare, contrast, and evaluate, and then on the right side, analyzing a case in which two or more texts provide conflicting information on the same topic. So again, it just kind of ups the ante as far as level of difficulty. And then finally, from English Language Arts, an example of how the skills develop from the lower grades up through high school, and you again can see how the complexity grows, how it spirals from grade to grade. So again, the standards provide the specificity, but the local district chooses the materials, curriculum, lessons, texts, instructional approaches, and the classroom assessments that will ensure that that skill is taught effectively and learned deeply. Couple examples in mathematics, grade four this time on the left side, the old Wisconsin State Standard, and then the right side. Again, you can see the difference in complexity. Grade 12, and another example of how it grows, similar to English Language Arts, you can see they construct a staircase, staircase of skills that build on one another. I also want to just highlight a little bit about the disciplinary literacy. The standards also address that instruction in reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language should be a shared responsibility in multiple disciplines. Each discipline has specific language, vocabulary, types of text, and ways of communicating in writing. For example, the way a student writes a science lab report is different than the writing necessary to craft a historical essay with support or a business letter to a prospective employer. Many teachers are already doing this in their classroom, and once again, as we go through their program review, we discuss the need for authentic speaking, listening, reading, writing, and thinking, and expect it to be embedded in each and every classroom through quality instruction and assessment. This visual is one that I thought I'd share. It actually came out of one of the modules developed by DPI and CISA, and was part of our training up in Turtle Lake. I think it, it does again once show you that the Common Core is that foundation, it's that skill set of what we need to teach. Then that framework becomes the state standard, so Wisconsin has taken the Common Core and kind of Wisconsinized it. What are we going, how are we going to implement it in Wisconsin? And then we're also looking at assessments, and it becomes the framework, and then the district still has the key decisions regarding curriculum, instruction, and assessment. The Common Core are also connected to several other reforms in Wisconsin, one being RTI. As you know, that's a multi-level system of support. We must ensure that all students have access to high-quality core curriculum, including Common Core, and provide additional support or challenges when needed to students to ensure that they all achieve at high levels of academic and behavioral success. The Smarter Balanced Assessment. The assessment is separate from the Common Core. Wisconsin selected to be part of the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium for the Next Generation Assessment. Those assessments will be aligned to Common Core and include formative, interim, and summative tools. The legislature in this last session approved to implement the assessment starting in the 2014-15 school year. The assessments will be computer-based, which is not new for us, it's similar to what we do with our NWA Measures of Academic Progress assessments, and the legislature also approved to require that the ACT Explore will be given in ninth grade, the ACT Plan in 10th, and the ACT in 11th grade beginning in the 2014-15 school year. Many of you know the school report card, which will be coming out in September. The legislature recently again took action to require DPI to annually publish a school and school district report card, and that includes multiple measures to determine performance, which include achievement and growth in reading and math, again, Common Core, college and career readiness, gaps and gaps in student achievement, and rates of graduation by subgroups. And then finally, educator effectiveness. This system's designed to evaluate teachers and principals using multiple measures across two main areas, educator practice and student outcomes. And again, it will obviously be taking into account student performance on state assessments. So hopefully, I'll go back to this one, you can see how Common Core, yes, lays out the foundation, the skills that we need to address, but the district has lots of local control when it comes to developing our curriculum, our instruction, and our assessments. Questions and comments? Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Lot of, lot coming down the road here. Okay, I think we're moving next to the 2012-13 SMART Goal Results, and Jamie and Dave are going to take this one, so.
Well, also presented at the Learning and Program Development Committee meeting, I think. Thank you. We presented at that Learning and Program Development Committee meeting, the SMART Goal Results Report, if you recall, we had a similar report a year ago on the prior year's goals, and those were changed at both the elementary, or at all three, the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. The elementary goal was based on student narrative writing skills. The middle school goal was based on student growth in the NWEA MAP assessment, and the high school had two goals. The first goal was based on data The first goal was based on data collected pertaining to freshmen and sophomore indicators of success. And the second goal was based on student results in Advanced Placement or AP courses, the Advanced Placement tests, and other courses in which college credit is available. So tonight, you're going to hear the results as well as some of the actions that took place to realize those goals.
Thank you very much. Last year, we kicked off our SMART Goal theme in October. That's when we share with the board the goals that we set. And we kicked that off with the theme orchestrating our future through continuous improvement. And the SMART Goals have been a major component of how we go about that continuous improvement cycle. Our students, teachers, and staff members and principals all committed resources, energy, and talent directly and indirectly to the process that moved us forward with SMART Goals. And we're very proud of all that we accomplished through this process. The, we have some themes up here that I think are worth mentioning. We have jazz and the HSD SMART Goal Process. I know that might seem a little bit disconnected, but we did some studying as an administrative leadership team with some concepts around the idea of jazz. And all of these rang incredibly true through this past year in the SMART Goal Process. The idea of mastering the art of unlearning and high expectations, performing, experimenting simultaneously, balancing freedoms and constraints, and taking turns soloing and supporting. All those principles came true in many ways through the SMART Goal Process. But what it really boils down to is the SMART Goal Process is definitely focused on student learning. But there's another benefit that happens, and it's a creative benefit that happens to the leadership that supports the SMART Goals. That's teacher leadership, administrative leadership, and in many ways, student leadership too, as they take ownership for their own learning. We're going to take some time to quickly go through what we refer to as our HSD System for Learning. And this is something that was developed actually several years ago. And I think the most significant thing about this system for learning is that it's quite durable. It holds true today, even after all the changes that we talked about in the state of Wisconsin in the world of education, many of which Sandy just mentioned previously in her last presentation. This still holds so true and in fact has helped support us through many of these changes. So that first visual is of those COGS. And those COGS represent the fact that when we couple our energies and we have a singular systemic focus, we'll have greater impact and the system will move forward quickly and in a better direction. The visual starts here with this tread, and you'll notice the words around the tread refer to the components of our HSD 2025 strategic vision. And it's always focused on improving student learning. As we start to bring in the spokes, we're talking about specific initiatives or practices that support that system. SMART Goals being one that we highlight in what we're talking about specifically today. Learning interventions, this is one where we continually learn more and more, and Sandy had just mentioned RTI, the learning interventions are a major component of that. Best practices, throughout the SMART Goal Process, we're exploring best practices, trying to find out what's happening out there in the world of education that will help us achieve our goals. And finally, assessment, which is obviously, again, a major component of the SMART Goal Process. Surrounding all of these, we have support and resources. And you'll hear a bit tonight about some of the support and resources that we put in place to move our SMART Goals forward. And finally, we have this continual system of improvement. And we can start anywhere on this, but in this one, we're starting with the idea of assessment. And then we move into analyzing the data from that assessment, setting goals based on the results, researching best practices to look for ways we can improve, and then finally, monitoring those results, adjusting if we need to, and then acting and continuing that cycle as it moves forward. Again, always aimed at improving student learning. And with that, I'm going to pass it to a few of our principals that are going to share. We're going to start with three of our elementary principals, and Amy's going to start us off. And they'll be sharing some of the adult learning, the student learning, as well as the results of our SMART Goals.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with a reminder, at the elementary level, we had a SMART Goal in reading for four years in a row. And every year, we improved and continued to work on reading. This last year, we decided that when we reached the 90%, that we would maintain our focus on reading, but expand literacy into the area of writing. So it was our first year of looking at writing. We also, in looking at writing, and we're going to hear a lot more about that, but we wanted to maintain that 90% in reading. We wanted to establish that baseline in writing, inform teachers of progress, and help them measure that. We knew that by setting a new writing goal, it would be lofty. It required a whole shift from the work they had done for the previous four years or added another level of work. And so we set our goal at 80% in writing. It was based on the fact that we wouldn't want to set it any lower, but we didn't really know what the baseline was. And it was specific to one area of narrative writing.
As Dave spoke of, some of the beauty of the SMART Goal Process is the effect on student learning and on teacher practice. And I'm going to outline the effect on teacher practice with our SMART Goal. We had some shifts in our system. Some of the shifts in our system were understanding really what the Common Core expectations were in the area of writing. As Sandy alluded to, really looking at that staircase of standards and how do they change from grade to grade. So our teachers spent a lot of time understanding those expectations and again, merging that with our vision of HSD 2025, what do we want all of our students to leave with in the area of writing. Another area in our system is we used the writing SMART Goal as our focus for our student learning objectives and our professional plan. So teachers took that goal and used that in their classrooms with their own students to really monitor their students, where they were going in that area. And again, that focus of instruction, focus of efforts, focus of professional development really built our teacher practice. Another shift in our system was the coaching and the principal feedback that we gave in the area of writing. It is work for us to understand what are the look for as we want to see in the classroom and how can we coach teachers and help teachers meet that expectation. In the classroom, there were significant shifts in instruction that happened. One of the beauties that I loved seeing at our Day Six Collaboration were our teams of teachers sitting down and really analyzing what do the standards mean and really talking about what is the best way to reach those standards, whether it be using mentor texts, whether it be how was I going to address this in a small group writing piece. But really, that collaborative conversation, as Sandy said, our local control of how we go about meeting those expectations was very strong. Another piece that happened in the elementary level is we did peer observations or lab classrooms, where we watched each other teach in the area of writing and really talked about what worked and what would be some shifts that we can do to improve it. And that real-life professional development and the conversations that happened there were very valuable. Another piece that we had too is a consistent guarantee and expectation to have small group writing happening in every classroom, kindergarten through fifth. It's a similar thing that we did in the area of reading, where we're really taking kids where they're at and trying to grow and personalize their instruction. So that was another strength that happened in our adult learning in the area of instruction. Assessment had a lot of changes and shifts as well. Really, it's that understanding of what the Common Core expects on our rubrics, and it's the student understanding, but also that teacher understanding, and how do we communicate that with students so they know what our endpoint is for the kids? And that was done through rubrics. Another powerful piece as far as assessment, our teachers took student writing and collaboratively scored that writing with our new rubrics to really look and say, are we agreeing that this piece of writing really matches what our expectation was? And through that collaborative scoring, they came up with exemplars or examples of what we expect for a third grader to be producing in the area of narrative writing. And those examples are our own kids here in our district. Sandy had shared the Common Core does give some exemplars too that we see, but it really becomes real when it's our kids writing in the classroom and we use that writing to share with students so that they can see what are the aspects that we're addressing. And another piece that we did for adult learning is the co-creation of rubrics of expectation. So really creating our expectations with the kids so they understand it, so it's not a hidden goal, was another shift in adult learning. In our rubrics, we have four different levels. And the aiming level that we want to move for is meeting standard, and that is the Common Core expectation that we have for that. So that's kind of our goal with our rubrics. This is one third-grade standard. There are five narrative third-grade standards in the area of that type of writing. There are also some conventions that go along with it. But this is one example that the students are using dialogue and description of actions, thought, and feeling to develop experiences and events or show responsive character situations. Notice the depth and complexity, as Sandy had shared before. In the past, it would say students use dialogue and description in their writing, but there was no purpose to it. And now you can see that there's a purpose for both of that description and that dialogue. We did some unpacking, as Sandy said, to really understand what are the verbs that they're looking for, to really see the depth. So we can see that teachers know they need to teach dialogue, they need to teach description, but also how we can show examples of this in student writing. The next one talks about the purpose of it, is you're using that to develop the experiences in the following slide, and also show responsive character situations. So you can see the depth of that standard and how teachers need to look and unpack those standards so you can think kind of that progression of how you would teach this to students so that they can apply that to their own writing. Now, Mr. Schmidt is going to share a little bit about student learning.
And as you can guess, the student learning was really aligned to the Common Core work that we had done this year also. And I'm really going to break it down into kind of three areas of student learning. It's before they write, during their writing, and after their writing. And a big portion of that happens within our Writers Workshop format. And within that format, that's, there's kind of three components. There's the mini lesson piece at the beginning, the independent writing and small group writing in the middle, and at the end, there's a sharing component of it too. So I want to first start with the mini lesson component. And there's a lot of time spent taking those standards and then changing those into learning targets that teachers can communicate and students can learn from and also see where they are in the process of really understanding and being able to apply the standard, but learning it through a learning target format. And so as Susie showed, she showed one example that comes from the overall narrative writing standard. There's five pieces to it. You saw the dialogue piece. There's also how to introduce your narrative, how can you sequence it in a natural way, transition from one part to another, and also have a conclusion to it. And so those are the components that make up the total rubric, but really as one overarching standard. So when you think about a good piece of narrative writing, those are the components that are in that piece. And so in that mini lesson, there's a lot of time taken to use what we call the gradual release process. And so it starts with teacher modeling, either through their own writing. So with this example, it could be through using dialogue in their writing or using a mentor text that shows good examples of what that looks like. And during that mini lesson, it really flows from teacher owning the modeling to independence for students. And so it goes from modeling to kind of a think together between the student and the teacher, to some guided practice where a student may be paired with another child, applying that skill in writing, and finally, to getting it to an independent piece. And so that's kind of the middle, middle of the Writers Workshop format is actually applying those skills in their writing. And that happens every day, just like in our Readers Workshop, we put time aside for independent writing to build, excuse me, independent reading, to build reading stamina. We do the same in our Writing Workshop. We put time aside every day so they can build their writing stamina. Really important. We've also built time within our schedule to allow for nonfiction writing in the other curriculum areas. And so they're able to create and also to show their thinking through their writing, which is really important. Also during that independent writing piece, there's time to reflect on the rubrics that Susie talked about. So during the mini lesson, the learning target is showed, and a lot of times that rubric is up. And so when students are applying their writing, they can also be checking in and seeing how they're doing towards that standard that we have. The final piece is when they give themselves feedback. So they finish a piece of writing, it could be at sharing time, and they can be reflecting on the rubric, and they can also be getting feedback from their teacher on where they are in that process so they can have some support to know where to go next with their writing. And I would like to just switch over, Susie and I think both Sandy talked about student-friendly language. And so one of the pieces that was created was taking, for example, that dialogue standard and making it in a student-friendly learning target that students can use and understand and be able to really gauge, am I meeting that standard? And so this would be an example of what it could look like for a third-grade classroom to have a student-friendly language, and this actually is one that we were using this year. So I use dialogue in my story to make my story better, so just making it clear for the child. And then this is an example of one of our on-demand writing pieces. So this past year, one of the big shifts is that to kind of see the growth this year and monitor the growth and give feedback, we had three on-demand writing periods throughout the year. One in the fall, one in the winter, and one in the spring. And this is one example of a part of an on-demand writing piece. This was a departure from what we've done before, and on-demand writing really sounds like exactly what it is. It is a shorter period of time to do a piece of writing. So in our Writers Workshop, normally, students have several days to brainstorm, to draft, to revise, to edit, and to publish, if they're taking the publishing. On-demand writing is a much shorter window, two 45-minute periods. And so if you think about the writing that you do as an adult in your daily life, you have a short window to do that. And you are brainstorming, drafting, revising, editing, publishing, and being really fluid through that process. And so one of the benefits of the on-demand writing is we're getting to more authentic pieces of writing. Now, we're nowhere near where we want the end product to be for students, but it's a good start to have them doing another type of writing that's just more authentic to what they'll have to do in their adult life, so getting ready for those college and career readiness skills. So again, this is example of one of our English Language learner students who has been in our country for two years. It's an example we wanted to show because it just highlights some of the dialogue, actions, thoughts that add to a good narrative piece. And I will turn it back over to Amy, and she can talk about our results for the year.
And just to reiterate, this SMART Goal was measured using these three on-demand writing prompts. But writing was measured and growth in writing was measured all year long in many, many different ways. And in fact, as students start the new year, we have writing portfolios and samples of their work from the previous year. And it's really great for the kids to look at those and look at where they've come from. The final goal in the end of the year was that 67% of our K through fifth-grade students independently demonstrated their grade-level proficiency on this district-wide narrative continuum for writing. We will continue to focus our elementary SMART Goal on writing, our actions as well. We'll expand in our professional learning for students and staff. We also intend to maintain our 90% or advance that proficiency in reading and work on two additional areas of writing, both opinion and informational, which are in the Common Core standards. So that's what we'll be working on eventually.
And with that, we'll transition to Principal Dan Koch and Peg Schumaker to share our secondary SMART Goal results.
Up is on, down is off. Got that? Okay, we want to take a look at the SMART Goal results for the middle school. There's in color as well, so if I refer to the...
That is an X. I do believe so.
Okay.
Yes, it would be.
Okay, good. The SMART Goal at the middle school this year again was focused on reading. Are we good to go here? You're telling her I wasn't close enough? Okay. So again, we're focused on reading at the middle school. And our second year of working on this from the perspective of a building-wide SMART Goal. And obviously, the components then, looking at individual student, growth and achievement, grade level, growth and achievement, and then as a building overall, in terms of the progression that we went through. And the SMART Goal being that the students at the middle school meeting or exceeding their growth target on the NWA MAPS test will result in our school performing at or above the 90th percentile. Now, this does get a little confusing at some point, and I've got Dave over here as my ally. When we're talking about comparison, comparing growth... When we're talking about comparison, comparing growth, uh, and, um, grade level improvement on average, we've got some statistical things that can make a difference. I'm going to jump right to the end and tell you, we did okay. So, um, as we work our, as we work our way through this, uh, the story comes out happily at the end. The, uh, the second page is in reference to the adult learning. And this is something that, um, uh, we've really actually enjoyed at the middle school. When we began the process of focusing on a building-wide SMART goal as opposed to individual grade levels, uh, the scope of the, of the endeavor was obviously much greater. And, uh, the adult learning characterized here by the three things that we've identified in terms of improving our understanding of twenty-first century standards. Um, and this would be every teacher in their particular content areas, uh, knowing what the twenty-first century standards, which we've been talking about tonight as Common Core, um, state standards, knowing how that applies to their individual disciplines, what they were supposed to be, uh, looking for and working with. Increased instructional skills in the area of reading, disciplinary literacy, which is broader than just reading, you know, reading, writing, speaking, listening, and so on. But our focus obviously in this case is, is reading. In that, uh, and incorporating these reading skills and strategies into their, uh, individual content areas in their lessons on a regular basis. And the third, uh, is more specific, is more of an example here, but refined skills in academic vocabulary and development. And really what that is suggesting is that teachers became more aware relative to the Common Core and the goals we had established for our students, the importance of very specific vocabulary. Uh, sometimes, uh, we have to step back and take note that we're speaking a language using a certain level of vocabulary that the students find difficult. Uh, and we became very aware of this and took the time to isolate important vocabulary and, um, the reflected concepts and ideas. And they made, um, word walls in their classrooms so that students could see those words, they could see the connections between those words and the concepts and ideas and things that they were studying. Other, um, adult learning that was really important for us, before we go to that, that next student slide, um, we also find that in the PLC process, having these collaborative discussions, you know, to improve, uh, reading strategies that were utilized in classes, the, the interaction of teachers, uh, very, very important, bouncing these ideas off one another, uh, coming back from trying it in their classroom, uh, comparing results that maybe they got, uh, what were some of the things that went well in your class, didn't go so well in this class. And we share those ideas, uh, and establish, um, uh, a greater use of those ideas or strategies that really seemed, seemed to work. Progress monitoring is, is really important. Um, and we've begun this, uh, in this area, the teachers actually collaborating with the students to have students participate in monitoring their own progress, um, and setting goals then as a result of the progress that they're making. Uh, that's become a very important part of, of what we have been doing. Uh, it also personalizes the, the instruction for, uh, for students. Regular reflection on instruction, again, the type of conversations you want to see in the, in the PLCs, uh, and the types of, um, meetings that we have. We have both interdisciplinary PLCs and we have grade level PLCs, and those conversations are important in both, in both areas. So collaboration, good conversation about strategies that work, uh, all resulted in a, a lot of the adult learning that we had in, um, in this process. Student learning, uh, the things that are identified here, uh, what, what I simply included here were some things that were fairly specific under two headings. Comprehension strategies, um, students gain skills, uh, in visualizing, uh, determining importance, and then in improved informational text reading skills, citing evidence, determining central ideas, and summarizing. Um, and these are terms that we use and they may not be real familiar to you, but they have very specific meaning as far as instruction is concerned. And, um, the things that would be easiest to explain, you know, citing evidence, finding those things in the reading that actually support key concepts and key ideas, what the author might, you know, might be saying. Actually determining the central idea, what is? I mean, you've read this entire passage, what is the central idea? What's the most important idea that, um, the, the author was trying to communicate here? And then again, summarizing the information that you've read that leads you to think something, process something, hypothesize about something. Visualizing, uh, in this case, uh, I think we all do this and sometimes, uh, well, we, I hope we all do this, we're trying to get everybody to do this, but when you read, visualizing in your mind, um, what the, uh, information that you, that you're, um, acquiring, um, how, how you connect that to your past experiences. So when you're reading something, you're making this connection, uh, in terms of what you have experienced in the past or things that you may know about. So you're visualizing these ideas, what they might look like, these words, what they might mean, trying to make those, those connections. And again, determining importance, um, in terms of what the author was trying to communicate. Uh, this slide, uh, I'm going to walk through this one just a little bit because we've got some examples here that, um, I, I think it's important for, um, for you to, to see and understand. And I actually want to, uh, begin this by having you keep in mind a quote. And the quote is simply this, that if you honor growth, you will consistently do what is right for all kids. Uh, and that's something that we want to keep in mind as, as we work through this. Now, on this particular chart, if you look at the, the, uh, the column, the first column, let's go grade six, and you see the green that says two twenty-six, but look at the two sixteen first. So that's the average, the average RIT. Okay, that's the national average right there. So sixth graders, uh, scored at a two sixteen on average, um, on the spring NWA test. Okay? Now, our sixth grade student example we have here, their spring score was two twenty-six, which obviously is a plus ten. It's ten points greater than the national average at this particular point. But their growth target was actually four. They were, they're, they're, at the beginning of the year, they were to try to grow four points on the, on the RIT scale. They actually only grew two. So they missed the target by two, but they did grow, which again is why I'm going back to that quote again, in terms of honoring growth, because that, that's really kind of the key here. So when you look at the grade seven student, we have basically the same sort of thing. The national average was two twenty. This student in the spring scored a two thirty-one, which was eleven points above the national average. Their growth target when they began in the fall was four, and they actually hit the four. The zero there simply means they, they kind of broke even, they were neither above nor below. Okay? Then the grade eight example, we have the national average for eighth graders in the spring was two thirty-four. This particular student scored a two sixteen, which was actually eighteen points below the national average. All right? But their growth target was nine. They actually grew twelve, which exceeded the growth target by three. Okay? So this is what I mean in terms of when we look at this, trying to honor, you know, the growth. Obviously, you want to keep moving forward and, and having all students continue to grow. But this chart I think explains that, um, you can look at this from a number of different angles, but growth is the one constant, and that students were making progress and they were growing, uh, as it's reflected in these, these, uh, three, I think, individual examples here. Okay? The next is the, are some of the results overall. And this is the, the actual achievement, uh, of the students on the NWA MAP test. Uh, in the fall, the column, the blue column or the darker colored column there, um, is the fall score, and then the gold or the lighter colored column is the spring score. And, um, what this represents is if you look at the sixth grade column, that in sixth grade, the students in the fall established a mean score, an average score here, which resulted in the grade level percentile of eighty-seven percent. And that's nationally normed again compared to, um, all the other, um, sixth grade, uh, classes or grades in, in the country. And in the spring, the students established a new mean score, which resulted in a grade level percentile of eighty-nine. All right? I'll use a, an analogy that, um, we just came up with, uh, a little earlier. If we played in a one-hundred-team league, a sports league or something, one-hundred teams, in the fall, we were kind of ranked eighty-seven. And through the work that was done and the, the progress they made at the, in the spring, they ended up eighty-nine. So they grew, they showed growth there. And you can look at repeating the same, the same thing with the seventh grade and the eighth grade. Eighty-four in the fall to ninety-one, um, well, excuse me, eighty-fourth percentile to ninety-first percentile, uh, in the spring. And in the eighth grade, the ninety, they started the ninety-second percentile in the fall and began, or ended with a ninety-fourth percentile, uh, in the spring. So on, then when you sort of average those out, you see where the school is in terms of beginning in the fall, the eighty-eighth percentile, ending in the spring, in the ninety-first percentile. Okay? And then this, this last slide, um, uh, is the, the mean gain percentile, which shows growth compared to the national, um, uh, to, to national norms for growth, from the fall of, uh, twenty-twelve to the spring of twenty-thirteen. And what this represents for our students, um, uh, is it's a representation for our students at every grade level. Uh, and this is a percent, this is percentile data again, and this goes back to the original SMART goal because we were converting it to a percentile at that time. And what this means is that on average now, our sixth graders, the sixth graders at Hudson Middle School improved at a greater rate than seventy-seven percent of the other sixth graders tested throughout the country. Okay? Our eighth graders improved, uh, better than eighty-eight percent, or excuse me, seventh graders better than eighty-eight percent of the seventh graders in the country, and our eighth graders improved, uh, better than ninety-seven percent, um, of the eighth graders in the country. I think that probably would be, would be enough. And questions, maybe one, Peg's done.
The work at the high school, um, of staff and students and administration from last year yielded some great results as well. Our goal for last year, uh, was by June of twenty-thirteen, that eighty-eight percent of our high school, um, freshmen and sophomores reported separately would meet the following indicators of success. Ninety-five percent attendance are better, earn at least six credits toward, um, being on track for graduation, report that they have one adult in the school they feel comfortable talking with, and zero discipline referrals. Those indicators are, um, success indicators that we will continue to look at, but those are success indicators in particular discipline, attendance, and grades. So, uh, we'll talk a little bit about the success and how they, uh, achieve the success. We also learned something about collecting particular types of data, which I'll explain in the minute, in a minute. The, uh, adult learning actions, um, obviously, our advisory program, uh, was particular adult learning actions in the freshman and sophomore group that really contributed toward, um, the, the results you'll see in a minute. An example of that would be us, um, an initiative brought forward, which was an anti-bullying initiative brought forward called Flip It Forward. And this program, uh, was incredibly successful at increasing, um, the connection between adults and students. In addition, uh, we had the Thursday morning collaboration with, uh, the hour late start every Thursday morning. And, uh, also that was supported, uh, in addition with the instructional coaches, which were new to the high school last year. So those were specific adult actions. Then if we look at student learning, uh, examples and actions, we did a lot of the community building and, um, beginnings of academic career planning and advisory. Also specifically taught students, uh, self-advocacy skills through the advisory process. So let's take a look at our results now. Our goal was eighty-eight percent, and we did achieve that eighty-eight percent. I'll talk a little bit about each of these, uh, indicators. So we altered our data collection slightly for the attendance and ended up recording the total attendance, mainly because it, it now represents total periods, um, uh, that students were actually in attendance. Prior, uh, some of the ways that we were initially collecting data was not accurately represented because it was, for instance, sh, you know, showing an absence when a student was perhaps attending, uh, had an excused absence or might have been attending an athletic event. And so we, we altered, uh, that data collection. Overall, we did absolutely, um, very well, uh, and that was evident in our school report card as well. The credit completion data, uh, was something that we will continue to look at year to year. We don't have yet our RTI systems in place, our response to intervention. That is something that needs to happen. So, um, but overall, we had the, um, some, some good scores there. The adult connection piece, if you remember Laura presented in July, and we specifically looked at high school learning for the future and the adult connection piece. This is really a point of pride. We saw a significant increase, uh, in terms of adults that had connections with those that had advisories and the older grade levels that did not. Finally, if you look at the zero discipline referrals, this was a really tricky area in terms of collecting because it wasn't exactly accurate in what we were going for. So we've learned that we need to collect that data differently. For instance, if a student had a, a hat on, um, that was weighing equally to something that might have been more significant. So this data, uh, is, is not exactly representative of what we would want. Nonetheless, uh, we made that eighty-eight percent and, and we're really, really proud of that, in particular in that area of the credit and the adult connection piece. Then if we look at our second goal, um, we know that, um, college credit is something that is a real point of pride in Hudson High School and something that we, um, strive to be better at. And so our goal was by twenty-thirteen, there would be a ten percent increase in the number of students taking courses, um, which college credit was available, and that we would maintain an AP passing rate of eighty percent and an AP, or excuse me, a passing rate of eighty percent or better in transcripted courses. And some of the adult learning, uh, actions that took place is, we did increase our curricular alignment through the prep process. We also had the structured Thursday morning collaboration times. An additional action that AP teachers took is they went into every single advisory and talked to the advisory about AP courses. Also, our, our coaches assisted, um, in these areas in terms of building the disciplinary literacy, uh, which is a really nice extension of what happens at the middle school and will continue next year. So, uh, the student learning goals, um, in, um, included, um, that ninety-seven percent of, sorry, I lost my place. Uh, ninety-seven percent of, of our students tested throughout the nation, um, showed a great improvement. They, um, forgive me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Where am I here? Here I am. Sorry. Okay. Um, the, the piece that we, um, looked at implementing was the, uh, college and career readiness pathways through the advisory. And you're going to see in this upcoming year that our, um, advisory will, advisories will have even more of a significant impact, um, on academic goal-setting and career planning. So that was an area in terms of our student learning goal that we increased. So let's go to the drum roll here on our AP results. If you think about the fact that, um, we tested a significantly greater, um, percentage of our students who actually took the AP test resulted in about a hundred and fifty more kids taking AP tests. And we maintain that eighty percent. That is really, really, really a point of pride for Hudson. Um, we, I, we were figuring in our office, it's a real significant increase in, uh, college readiness, significantly increased, um, with kids, when they get to college, taking harder courses. Uh, with also an additional increase in parents saving a substantial amount of money when you think about, um, kids are already going into college with those, having those credits. In addition, we sort of blew it out of the water in terms of our transcripted courses. And in part, this was due to more transcripted courses, but there was a significant effort, especially, um, by, um, Melissa Hansen to increase the amount of coursework that had rigor and were actually, um, no, you know, noted to be transcripted. So this was also a real significant, um... So this was also a real significant increase at the high school and an additional point of pride.
All right. We're going to transition into next steps with our SMART goal process. And just a few things to mention as we reflect back on the progress. The SMART goal process, as we said, is aimed directly at student learning, but the adult learning that's associated and the practices that come into play because of the work is, I would say, equally important. It's all part of the same system that supports ultimately the student learning. And so one area as far as the next step is to move into system quality improvement. And the idea there is that we have several different goal-setting structures in place, and we're looking at ways we can measure the quality of our systemic growth. And we've invested tremendous amount of energy, time, and resources into the SMART goal process. We'd like to use it for more than just the individual goal-setting at the buildings and the levels. Another piece that's very significant is the concept of student learning objectives, which is one of the most significant changes in the educator effectiveness system that we've talked about. And what it essentially means is that teachers will be writing individual goals based on student growth and student learning that will be included as part of their teacher, or part of their teacher evaluation system. And by connecting that to the SMART goal, again, we can increase the capacity for that learning by not layering new things on top for our teachers, instead aligning the work that they do. And then finally, just the SMART cycle improvement. And what we mean by that is illustrated here with the visual, and I shared this last year when we talked about the process. So the idea is that we want to work on establishing long-term goals. Sometimes that takes a few years to key in and say, that's the goal. Now we've got it, and that's something we can key into long-term. And then we measure our annual progress toward that goal, and when we get close, we start collecting baseline data on the other goal. An example of that would be in the elementary system. We heard that we've moved from reading to writing. Honestly, we would have been better off if we would have anticipated meeting that ninety percent the year earlier and collected baseline data, so it keeps the cycle moving. It creates a little hiccup in the system when we don't anticipate that. It still is good for student learning, but it does create a hiccup that we'd like to avoid. And then ultimately, we reach that long-term goal, and we establish new goal with that pre-established baseline data. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Bruce?
Mr. President? Just curious, I think it's fantastic to see the AP results and also the fact that we have that many more students engaging in AP courses. The costs of secondary education, collegiate level, it's certainly impressive to see that. What's our capacity to take on additional AP courses with, you know, what we have for both teachers and space limitations within our buildings?
That's a fantastic question, and it is somewhat limited. We don't anticipate being able to sustain growth at that level. And actually, I'm going to hold off on answering the specifics to that question because Sandy's actually going to be sharing a specific report on AP, but you're exactly right. There is a limit to the capacity of growing at the rate that we have been growing.
Thanks.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the board? I think it's an important point that was made by Dan in terms of measuring progress, or measuring growth. I think that's an important concept and dynamic in my mind. I value that over and above, I think, necessarily reaching a certain point, meeting, in one case, a national level. But growth is what I think is what's most meaningful in the work that you all, we all are doing. And so that struck me when you brought that forward, and I think that's important. So, anybody else?
Mr. President?
Yep?
You know, I think about what the principals and Dave have shared here, and we have been working on SMART goals for a number of years, and you've seen significant growth in student learning demonstrated by those SMART goals. And now we've kind of hit a new plateau that we're moving up to the next level of using SMART goals within the organization at a higher level. And so I know that the principals and Dave and our teachers are working on what's that next phase look like to help us continually improve. So although some of our goals we didn't quite meet, we learned quite a bit, and our students learned as a result of them. So we could continue to set goals that we can meet, that we're pretty confident we can meet. And I just want to compliment our team for not doing that and setting goals that continue to stretch us even when we don't know what the baseline is. So it's kind of, you know, we're setting it and we're not sure, and we don't reach it. But from that, we learn. Our teachers move up in their practice, and our students learn as well. So again, we're kind of at that plateau to move to the next level, and I'm anxious to see the goals in October for this coming year.
I think that's well said, and it kind of goes with what I'm saying, is that we take less pressure up ourselves if we don't focus on necessarily making gold, but focusing on improvement, focusing on growth. So, and that frees us, I think, to set those goals lofty. So, okay. All right. I think we're moving on, right? Moving on to Sandy and 2013 AP preliminary report.
Thank you. I have some, I have some great news tonight with our AP results, and I'll piggyback off of some of what Peg has shared as far as our results. As you know, AP is a program which allows students to pursue college-level studies while in high school. And we currently offer in Hudson High School thirteen AP courses plus nine online courses. And that's one way we can expand the opportunities because many of the online courses only have one or two students taking them, so we could never offer them inside our four walls, but this is a way students can achieve those courses. And you can see that four hundred and twenty-seven students took seven hundred and eighty-seven tests in May 2013. And here's some of my favorite slides. Oh, and I was going to state too that most, not all, but most colleges and universities, if you earn a three or higher, you do achieve college credit for that, enhances savings for our parents. So just look at any of the columns. You can see whether it's the number of students that have grown in the last six years, to the number of exams, to the number of scores, three or above. And yet, the last three years, we've been able, as we've been growing, to keep eighty percent of our students achieving that score of three or higher. It's just something really that we're just very proud of this evening to share. And then one by one, it's just to look at, one, the total number of AP students, the number of exams, this is just huge, the number of students with scores three or higher, and then finally, just looking at the percent of students with scores, one or more scores of three or higher. And then this is looking at Hudson compared to Wisconsin overall, and then globally with those scores. As you alluded to, Bruce, there's only so much capacity. The only one I'm aware of in the wings that we're considering is AP Geography is one that the social studies department is looking to bring forward as a new course. Part of that is because it can be offered in 10th grade, so if, you know, there's something we can find at that ninth or 10th grade level, we'd like to bring that in. The piece we want to really look at though is, we have a goal of making students college and career ready. The high school wants to see all students having experiences in college or career-level courses, so to continue to grow that articulated course offerings, as well as looking at other programs similar to our pre-engineering, PLTW, because that's another area where those students take an assessment at the end of the year that's a national assessment, and they too can earn college-level credits. So we're looking for other programming and increasing articulated, so we can keep, you know, increasing our opportunities even outside of the advanced placement. So, good news, good news to share.
Very good news. Yep. Any questions or comments for Sandy?
Mr. President, just one comment.
Brian?
Yeah, the uptake is pretty impressive, especially in the number of exams taken and those scoring above three. So I think it's just great work, and I think we have to keep promoting this and especially taking the tests, because I know that was kind of a focus area for us, you know, two years ago. So I'm really impressed with the results. A nice job to the leadership and for the, you know, for the work being done at the kind of the, you know, at the building level. So, yeah. Would be great to see AP course for 10th graders too.
Very.
You know, we're focusing on the high school with AP and transcripted credits, but I want to just go back to that system that Dave talked about because it is a system approach that's really making this happen. And it happens at each of our levels, connecting and maximizing the learning around a vision and moving that forward. So we're preparing more students at higher levels, and they're challenging themselves to take these rigorous courses and to do so well. So kudos to our students, kudos to our staff, and kudos to the administration team who's leading that collaboratively.
Amen. Okay. We'll move on then to the high school asbestos abatement. Tim, something to report regarding that?
Okay. I want to update you on some unplanned asbestos abatement activity at the high school. It's a somewhat unusual situation for us, but I'll give you a little bit of background. The district provides notification to the public about any planned asbestos abatement projects that we have planned in the upcoming year. So for 2013-14, we didn't have any abatement projects planned. The abatement projects are somewhat common when we're remodeling or modifying our older buildings. If we look at buildings such as Rivercrest, Hudson Prairie, and Hudson Middle School, those are buildings that we don't have any asbestos products in, but when we do, of course, we have to go through an abatement program. It's a pretty intensive process. Sometime between late June and the beginning of July, we had an unauthorized removal of a blackboard that occurred on southwest side of the high school. There was a mastic adhesive that's used to hold the board on, and that mastic adhesive contained a five percent asbestos-containing product. So not a high concentration of asbestos, but it did contain asbestos. Even though the mastic adhesive is not friable, meaning it's not particularly airborne, particularly prone to airborne particles, it's, you know, we have to treat it seriously. But it's extremely low, the likelihood of particles becoming airborne is extremely low in this type of mastic adhesive. The material that it's in tends to hold the fibers together. It's not like if I compared it to old pipe insulation that contains asbestos where it crumbles easily, possibly if it's in poor condition. This is very different. So again, when you look at this particular material, the likelihood of those particles becoming released and airborne is extremely low. So it's important to remember. Administration took immediate precautions when we became aware of the situation on Monday, August 5th. So those precautions included sealing off the room, the core lock set to the classroom was removed, so no one could enter the room. An additional barrier was put up in place in the hallway to act as a secondary containment area if needed, just as an added precaution. And these are things that you would normally do when you, if you find out you're uncovering asbestos. In addition, the air handling units serving the west side of the high school were also shut down, so we didn't have circulation if there was a problem. We contracted with a person by the name of Tim Marxhausen, who works for Parks Environmental Consulting, the next day on August 6th. Mr. Marxhausen is a 25-year veteran in the asbestos inspection and abatement industry, so he's got a lot of experience. In his professional opinion, and this is another important piece to remember, in his professional opinion, breaking a small amount of mastic adhesive, as he reviewed it, presents a de minimis release of fibers. So it prevents, it presents a very de minimis release of fibers, and that's again important to remember. Further, he ventures that asbestos fibers, more asbestos fibers are released into the immediate environment by vehicle brake pads, those that contain asbestos, at high-volume intersections than occurred during removal of the blackboard. So to put it in perspective, we had a very low, low-risk situation. Air sampling tests were performed by Mr. Marxhausen that same day, the same evening, and we're able to get those results back later that evening. And the test, the particular testing done so that we get results back immediately was testing for asbestos and non-asbestos fibers. And those were performed in the room, and then there were two more sample, air samples pulled in the areas in the hallway that evening. The results show that fiber values far below EPA clearance criteria. And again, we're looking at total fiber count, not just asbestos. And so those came in, those results came in far below EPA clearance criteria. On August 8th and 9th, we had AirTech Environmental Services contracted to come in and remove or abate the mastic adhesive and clean the room. Subsequently, after that's done, again, the normal course is after an abatement's been performed, you do an additional clearance test. And so that clearance test was performed and sent to EMSL Analytical Incorporated, and no asbestos fibers were detected. That test is a little bit different. It tests specifically for the asbestos fibers. And that test, that's not a same-day results test, but that's the standard protocol. The district treats any asbestos-containing material seriously, and so we want to ensure the safety of students, employees, and the general public. As part of, just to give you an overall idea, as part of the district's asbestos safety program, any school building that contains asbestos is reviewed every six months. And we have a health and safety consultant, and that's advanced health and safety. And so they go through the buildings that contain asbestos every six months, and they review the condition of the material and evaluate it, and if warranted, then an asbestos abatement is planned and performed. Additionally, all of our facilities and ground staff are trained in asbestos awareness, and then every two to three years or fresher courses are given to staff. If we do abatement, if it's planned abatement, it's only done by qualified and licensed abatement companies, and clearance tests are, again, always performed after the abatement. Normal, our normal practice is we do not perform planned asbestos abatement while school's in session, even though it is acceptable. We go outside of that and go to an additional step of safety. We don't do it while school's in session. But again, when we do, rooms are sealed off, and we, there's a standard protocol, and our asbestos contractors are qualified and licensed experts in that area. We also, as a practice, do not remove blackboards because we know that there is a potential for this mastic to contain asbestos, as in this case. And so we'll be additionally sending a communication reminding all employees to refrain from removal of those fixtures off of walls except through a properly approved work order. So that is my update. Have any questions?
Any questions for Tim? Okay. Thank you, Tim. We'll stay with you and go to Secondary Space for Learning County UU Utilities Update.
Okay. As we previously discussed, we, moving forward to look at the UU property and in terms of looking at it from locating or installing onsite septic and water, at this point, request for proposals went out. We've got two firms that responded, SEH out of Chippewa Falls, and then- and then Bodwin out of Sturgeon Bay, both qualified firms that work with large-scale septic systems. So we'll be working, again, as we discussed previously, with the, with the Board President and Vice President on the decision of which firm to go through, we need to qualify the proposals that were sent in, and then we'll be determining, working out an agreement with the selected consultant. We're still, at this point, waiting to get information, the proposal from the city, hoping that will be coming soon. We're thinking, hopefully, we're close to mid-month, and that's about when they, when they expected to have that to us, so. Any questions there?
I don't see any questions, so we'll keep with you, Tim, it looks like it's your show here, 2013-14 Budget Publication.
Okay. The Budget Publication is a required publication that we do every year. This is the required format that the state requires all, all school districts to put in the paper and publish, and this is the required format, no changes from the last time that you saw the budget on July 9th, it's just a different format. So I won't get into a lot of detail unless you've got questions, but if you turn to that second page down at the very bottom, you can see the proposed tax levy at 1.64%. So we're same, the same numbers as what you saw in July. And this will be published in the paper, will be another, another week or two. Any questions?
Questions on the, on the budget? Okay. All right, June Storm Damage Update.
As you, as you all know, we suffered some storm damage in June, and probably some of the most significant damage that we had was related to a roof that was lifted by the wind in that particular storm at the high school. And we had some water infiltration, and we had some damage to, to gym floor, and we had some, we had a dugout, at least one dugout roof blow off, we had a couple of backstops damaged and bent, we had a lot of downed trees, we had some sighting of flashing damaged at the middle school. So we had a, we had a fair amount of damage. The good news is, of course, we've got insurance to cover that. Because of the severe and the extent of the damage in this region, Governor Walker requested some federal assistance through FEMA, and that was, that was granted, and we've done an initial filing with FEMA, and at this point, our dollars that we would be eligible for reimbursement on are the $10,000 deductible that we have for our property insurance, and then we've got approximately $6,000 for debris removal that isn't covered by insurance, so a total of about $16,000. Will be, it looks like FEMA will reimburse about 75% of that, approximately $16,000, and then we'll have another 15% reimbursement through the state. So leaves the district with about $1,600 of out-of-pocket. So we're working through that process and applying, and we've got a meeting to attend with FEMA representatives at the County Government Center next Friday, so. Any questions?
Then moving on to finally, Safety and Security Implementation, I'd just like to make a brief comment regarding this. It's something that I, as on the Facilities Committee, have been involved with, and just wanted to make the comment that it may not be understood, or really completely under, completely understood how serious we as a district are taking safety and security of our schools in light of many things that have happened across this country recent days. And it's not always seen, but I think that it's important to note that we have worked on it over the past, I'd say, three years as well, on securing the entrances, entrances of each and every one of our schools now. We continue to work on this, continue to look at best practices, opportunities through technology, video improvements, things such as this. And I don't know that it's possible to ever be completely safe, but we're doing everything within our power and resources to assure that as best that we can, from the Facilities Committee perspective. We'll continue to work on this, and Tim is going to report on some, I'm going to let you know there's some generalities regarding this. There's some things specifically about, about our plans and things like that, we think we'd be better to keep, keep, keep hidden a bit for the purposes of safety and security. So with those comments, I'll let you give the final report, Tim.
Okay. Yeah, as Tom mentioned, there's been a process that we've been going through, it's pretty comprehensive, it's, it's looking at facilities, it's looking at crisis plans, it's really the whole gamut. And fortunately, again, as Tom mentioned, over the past few years, we've been ahead of that curve by doing our secured entrances at each school, and those have all been completed. And so we've got a very good piece in there, and a good starting point. Last, last spring, Corey McIntyre and Jim Staskel performed an extensive walkthrough of all of our schools, and reviewed security and safety with law enforcement, fire, and other emergency service personnel. And from that, that comprehensive walkthrough, and I should, I should also mention principals also accompanied them on those walkthroughs and gave input, so we had a number of different perspectives of input from that review. But from that list, then a prepared list of suggested safety enhancements was prioritized, and then that was, again, shared with the Facilities and Grounds Committee, and then with the Board of Education. The implementation started this summer, so some of the items on that list were in process and, and will have completed by the start of school. We'll continue in three phases, and so covering the next, next two years, we'll be looking at additional phases, and we'll be updating the Facilities and Grounds and Board as we progress through those. In addition to the review of the physical building safety, the summer staff were involved in National Association of School Psychologists Prepare Training Workshop, and that focused on crisis prevention and preparedness. So not only is this being addressed through buildings, it's also being addressed in a staffing way and in a planning for, for crises and preventing crises. A district team led by Tracy Habashalene has also been working on comprehensive updates to our Crisis Prevention Preparedness and Response Plan. You know, those include things such as severe weather, the makeup of crisis teams, lockdowns. We also have a tabletop exercise that's planned, and that will be conducted with, with first responders such as the county. So we have a lot of, we have many different things going on to address safety and security. Processes will also be developed to use with staff as part of the comprehensive planning. And then, incidentally, the, the leadership of the team will transition to our new HR Director Andrea over the next coming months, and we'll continue with that. So that's kind of a general, again, a general and a brief overview. If you have any questions?
Thanks, Tim. We have one committee report tonight, and that's from Learning and Program Development Committee, so Jamie's, we'll give that report.
Yes, well, in attendance, we had Lynn Robson substituting for our Chair, Brian Bell, and you've already heard their report regarding the Common Core State Standards from Sandy Kovach, and Dave Granbo's report on the SMART goal summary, along with the representatives from the different elementary, middle school, and high school levels, so we won't need to go over that. The Seclusion and Restraint Report was given by Tony Meyer. This was a detailed report looking at changes in the state statute and how we're implementing and addressing those, and really, it's very rarely used, this whole policy, and it turns out that in majority of the instances where it is used, it's used on some of the same students, and they have behavioral issues, and maybe in a short period of time, they're using it. But generally, it's not a widely-used policy, it's just that it's something that's there and is necessary, and we have to implement according to state statute. And then we, today, under consent items, changed the policy with regard to five-year-old kindergarten attendance and first-grade admission, making it a little bit more subjective, I guess, looking at individual, and trying to make it work for, for them. Some kids are ready, and we have to look at individual circumstances, and so some adjustments were made to the policy.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie, or any of the members of the Learning Program Committee? Okay, hearing none, we're at the point of where I receive a motion to adjourn to closed session. If somebody could read that in the form of a motion verbatim, then we'll...
Mr. President, move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Parent 1, Parent 2, to prepare for negotiations with the Teachers Union. F for the preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person involved in such problems. And C for the purpose of considering the compensation of a public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction, jurisdiction or exercise responsibility.
Motion by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Jamie.
Aye.
Bell, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, aye.
Hans, an aye.
We're adjourned to closed session. Thank you, everyone.